America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to read the Board of Education norms. And our norms are just the way we act. So number one, we'll treat each other with respect. Number two, we will listen to learn. Number three, we will refrain from side conversations. Number four, we will use our time wisely, starting and ending our meetings on time. Number five, we will challenge ideas and not people. Number six, we will ask questions and when in doubt... That's cut off, I'm sorry. We will ask questions when in doubt, I apologize. And lastly, there will be no surprises at the board table. At this time, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's Board of Education Board Session, May 2nd. Ms. McGowan, please call the roll.
Steve Mitchell, Lisa Carlin, Martha Malm, and Michelle Cimell. Here. And yes, and just...
Present. At this time, I have a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
They moved that we approved tonight's agenda, that is written.
Moved by trustee Momini, may I have a second? Supported by trustee Seats. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding tonight's agenda? Ms. McGowan, please call the roll.
Yes. Martha Malm.
Yes.
And just... Yes. And just...
Yes. Thank you. At this time, we'll turn it over to you to have to offer recognition.
Wonderful. Thank you. And so, we have a recognition tonight. We would like to bring before the board, Ms. Gina Lucas, who we all have worked with for over a year, and who is responsible for assisting us in getting our technology every night for our meetings, I'm sorry, every month for our meetings, and worked through helping improve our sound system, so that I know my experience last month listening to the board meeting going on and could actually hear. And of course, the other undertakers we've had in the district this year, we have some opportunities, and she's still working with her staff. And we just wanted to acknowledge you, Ms. Lucas, for your time and effort in helping us to ensure to as best that we can and that our children have technology. So if you all could join me and do a round of applause. And we also are going to recognize our librarians at the high school, but we had a disagreement reaching out to them, so we're going to go with this. Okay? And then I did want to just acknowledge Ms. McGowan and Ms. Momini for the help that they provided in our library, and okay, I know they provided our public service already, we just want you all to appreciate them for taking on that task, it was a big one, and continue to try to get our library back to business for kids and share some great resources. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Gina, Arga, Nancy, keep up the work. At this time, we'll have public participation. If you want to participate, please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes at the voting.
I suppose I'd say good evening.
Good evening.
And I feel proud to send out the director of Fresh Start Children's Garden, I've worked with the youth through the summer months at their school. I was at a meeting this past Thursday, and I'd like to place upon your mind that I was left very confused because I know that our superintendent has been here at least about eighteen months or more, and it was stated that our children would be brought, you would be able to see a difference in their scores or they're getting them up to par than requirement as to what they're supposed to be in a couple of months. But they only got one month in school, once they get back off of summer break. How can you get them up to par in that short of time that is stated for to get them up to where they should be, that they don't start dismantling our school? And for one thing, if you could do it in that short of time, why hasn't there been a vast difference made in the time that you've been here? So this is the thing that I'm confused about. Why hasn't there been a difference that this, the schools wouldn't be in the state of the dismantling? I'd call because from what I'm understanding, that it's really just taking our schools apart, that they don't bring up standards. So I want to know how in such a short time that you could bring them up when if you had have been applying this all the time, you wouldn't have been having the problem that you have now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public participation? We'll turn it over to Mr. Scott Johnson, District of Finance, the Fair and Rees of 2017, 2018, General Fund Budget Resolution, and the monthly financial reports.
Michigan State Law requires that your immediate school districts provide a copy of the proposed budget for review by the constituent districts, and it also requires that each year, the local school districts vote to approve the budget, or vote to express support for the budget or express concerns and disapproval for the seat in the pack at the seating and copy out the proposed budgets for the general fund and the special education fund, and invite copy to resolution, which will be presented next Tuesday for board presentation.
Any questions from board concerning the Fair and Rees of General Fund Budget Resolution? Monthly financial reports, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to highlight one report this evening, that's the report on the back of the set, and that's the eight accounts payable A G report. Please to report that you balance, you see on here seventeen thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars, this is the lowest amount on one of these reports during any month during the last five and a half years. The district has repaid its longstanding period of rees of payments for transportation services for prior years, and has significantly reduced other outstanding payables. For the April report, we will have a home up because the final week, payments in the final week of April will be printed this week instead of last week. So we will see a spike up in the next report, but we do expect that to decline in the end of this.
Thank you. Any questions, comments regarding the general fund summary? I just have one question. So, Mr. Johnson, for the utilities, you know, you put that all in just one big bundle, right? So is there way you can always break that up just to see from school to school? You know, the monthly usage, I guess, for utilities?
Would you like the monthly or the annual year-to-date?
Or, I mean, you're giving us every week, right, vendor payments? Because you have monthly utility bills, correct?
Right, we have monthly utility bills, and these are monthly reports.
Right. So, I mean, if we can break it down, because as we, you know, hopefully get the sinking fund tonight, develop that too, that shows us too where we kind of have heat loss, things like that, right, our utilities, right? Why are you using that?
As we can provide more detailed information on utilities.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Leonard, Facilities, Operations, the memo for custodial services bid, board recommendation, and also the mowing service bid, board recommendation. Mr. Leonard?
Yes, sir, thank you. The administrative team posted an RFP to solicit service proposals from professional custodial maintenance service providers that would support Benton Harbor School District's efforts to optimize utilization of resources and enhance service provisions to PHAS instructional staff, support staff, and the students that utilize between the districts occupied facilities. The RFP included contracting for the provision of all school districts custody and maintenance services. Proposals were received from a number of different firms. They were reviewed by the district leadership and review team in conjunction with the ventilation, and the district review team narrowed down the list of bidders to the most viable bids and checked their references. Representatives from the selected company were interviewed, and the district review team selected CSM Services because their proposal is the most competitive in price and responsive to the RFP. The Facilities and Operations Committee, I'm sorry, Subcommittee members were supplied with a copy of the formal proposal and the PHAS administrative formal recommendation on Tuesday, April 2015, 2017, February 2. This evening, as requested, I've invited the CSM team to introduce themselves and their company and provide the Board of Education with an opportunity to see the direct relationship in relation to their proposal and assumptions.
All right, thank you. So we have the CSM here tonight because they came to the board meeting, committee meeting, Mr. was not present, I was present, so I want to make sure the board hears from them in our absence, we are a committee of all. So they're going to give a presentation, and it's up to the board, I think you guys had a very in-depth presentation or short presentation, so what's our place?
Well, first off, thank you very much. My name is Mike Hara, I am one of the owners of CSM Services, and we are very happy to be here. I'm actually the president of operations, and to my left, as far as our team, my business partner, Steve Lattimer, Director of HR, Jason Gillett, Director of Maintenance, Mike Law, and Director of Sales, Mark Kaufman. Our goal here was to really outline how we are going to give and change perception of the team, and we gave you a very nice pamphlet, we're very able to go through that if we have the time, but I know the time is of the essence. Some of the big things inside there, I think that you're going to come to see is, we're going to outline the transition currently to CSM Services regarding hiring and possibly training your current staff. We're going to outline the importance of employee retention, that is key to be successful in cleaning any district is to retain your current employees, once they become CSM Services employees. We are going to outline the staffing structure and the importance of an account manager, that's one of the items that Brian and myself have been speaking on, how important that is with his role overseeing the district and the operations side, walking in, touring the buildings, and performing the audits and the checklist on a daily basis. We're going to outline the importance of how it is to the Benton Harbor area schools in a community of our success. And the key is building upon that we are one of the community, and we have a great reference, I think, if you will, with Flint Community Schools, who've been servicing them for approximately three years, in the same exact role of custodial and maintenance. And if you were to ask any one of our staff members over there, who do they work for? They work for Flint Community, and that is the big thing that we're going to be pushing here, and it's not a selling point, it's when they're in here, they're involved, they're fixing, they're cleaning, and they're giving your students a healthy and safe environment to learn it. And by doing so, our goal is that your buildings are better tomorrow than they are today. And if you have any other questions, or if you have a bunch of information here, I am more than willing to answer or get back if I can, and answer all my goals to answer all the questions today.
So does the board need just a little time to produce the manual, or do you have questions right now?
I apologize if you'd ask, where do you guys locate?
We're not in a great position.
I have a question. So we talk about acquiring talent and the hiring process, what about the local people? Are we going to try to make sure that we get local residents?
One hundred percent.
Sorry, I just tuned down because I was reading.
Yes, ma'am.
What was the question?
So the question was about hiring our local residents to make sure that that's a priority, right, in our district, when we look to obtaining top talent.
My question is, we had hired different companies before, up to these two now, and it has not worked out. What's different about you, how you can make my count, is this going to be different than the other two times that we've contracted out services?
We've been doing this for seventeen years, we take care of a number of districts, and to be successful, it starts with a partnership on both sides. And what I mean by that is, when you have an administrative team that is one hundred percent working towards a successful contractor, you have the contractor, they meet together, they partner, and tour the buildings, and audit, and make sure that everybody's trained, and then the proper staff are inside there, that is going to be, and give you the successful communication to be a cleaning partner. It's not just about cleaning every day and every night, but there's so many more facets that go into, and it starts with just the proper communication. Before being interviewed the very first time, I said to my partners, David and Mark, since Mark was the one doing the tours, the phone conversations and the emails with Brian felt right. And when I met him, and we were discussing the proposal and possibly getting to this point, I told him, I thought, this is going to work, and you can tell that he's very much involved, he's got a background of custodial services, but he wants us to work. And when you have both sides that want it to work, and not to say it did before, but there could have been some areas that needed improvement, we're here to make sure both sides work.
Mr. Seats, then Ms. McGowan?
Thank you. How many current custodians do we have now? And what is your anticipated number of employees that you'll be hiring? And then the last part to that question for our district is, does the employees now have 401K? Custodians now, do they have that 401, do they have healthcare, pay holidays and vacations?
Currently, right now, I know. Through the current staffing agency utilized, the employees have received PEG for time worth of that position.
Okay, and how many do you have hired right now? How many curve it on the payroll? On their payroll?
Just one second here, five seconds.
Okay. How many have you looked at to see how many you anticipate to hire? I like your retention of layout, as far as your pay scale, benefits, and your training, so I do like how you presented that, but how many are you looking to hire?
Inside, there's a very detailed staffing chart, I'm going to go over that with you. I think some of the items before was changed this time as well, is they allocated some day staff, so there's six and a half, which are the day custodians, I believe there's thirteen evening custodians, there's one account manager, and three licensed maintenance personnel, and licenses are going to be for H-bag, for plugging in, for electric.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McGowan?
You have eighteen?
Yes, approximately fifteen, sixteen at least.
We have fifteen, sixteen now.
Okay. And that currently, the situation of those recurring is an understatement. One of the benefits when we look at this proposal is to actually put our staffing at a level to actually meet the needs of the facilities and in alignment with industry standards.
Well, how many do you have for day, and how many do we currently have for evening right now? Is it broke down by what this news?
It's a randomized scheduling process, it's currently in place, so I can't give you a definitive this is day, because it ranges throughout the day. We have a number of, also part of time, maybe by choice, we have selected a new schedule.
Thank you.
Ms. McGowan?
My concern is cleanliness, because I have lived through all the people that, you know, the companies that we hired, the ones that were under us. So, you know, it's been in the past, you guys start out well, and then your standards disappear, you know, trash cans don't get emptied on your normal floor, it's with dirty water, you guys don't clean the edges, you know, corners are not cleaned, and I realize our buildings are old, but I happen to like old bits, and, you know, if a building is cleaned, that makes a world of difference, and is that something that's going to be focused on?
And I'll actually speak to this momentarily, and then I'll turn it over to you. Now, I can't speak on behalf of CMS and what their performance will be throughout the term of the contract, but what I do believe that it will be is consistent. I do believe also that the structures that we've negotiated far, as far as the staffing and the methodologies related to the cleaning schedules, as well as the maintenance schedules, will meet that, I don't want to say need, because it really isn't need, but we have because we do, you know, here in the district. What I mean by that is, unfortunately, currently, our practices are such that we clean when the facilities are in use, and that is a non-effective practice, well-established within the industry. Buildings should be put away and cleaned, just like a baby, no different. Taken care of throughout the day, taken fully cleaned and put away clean at night and ready to go the next morning. One of the things that we spoke directly about at our last interview was the fact that they do a night of audit through all of the facilities by a lead supervisor. That will then be followed by my own audit in the mornings, because my days will start off with a walk-through of each of the buildings, so that I'll be verifying everything that was done, and supposedly inspected and identified from the previous night. So I believe structures of that nature, and some of the changes to managerial structures that are putting in place, will help us work toward that goal of staying on top of these things as they come up, and challenges will come up, it's inevitable, but I believe we'll be able to be attentive to be right.
Corners will be cleaned?
In time, they will be. The accumulation that we currently have, it's going to take some time, but I do believe you will see it.
But, yeah, you look at a building, the hallway, you know, it's dirty, it's dirty.
That was one thing.
Corners are clean, that makes... So I hope we check and clean.
No, and I think it's important, and I don't know if the frequency schedule is in there, but I can't send that to all the board, I know it was in the RFP, so it is available there, and that was a big issue as we went through line by line for frequency, and among all the companies, there was about, I'm going to guess here's Scott, give me a little clarification on this one, I believe it was approximately about eight thousand dollars of labor-time debtors, and a heavier concentration in the frequency of cleaning specific things with CMS than any of the other organizations that came back and all of these things.
Mrs. Momini?
Okay, so Brian, you are our stopgap, you're the one that's going to make sure that they're doing, that they're keeping up with the schedule, that they're keeping it clean, it's a few weeks, get mad at if it's not, right? Okay. Thank you, Spirit.
Any other questions?
So I have one, so at the beginning of the presentation here, talk about the stages of hiring. So when we look at the stages of hiring, and we talk about the job fair, is that a job fair internally, or is that a job fair like through the nexus? Or how are you guys going to do that?
Do you mind if I turn it over to Jason?
Good evening. So the way that our hiring process would work when we're transitioning into a new account like this is, we are going to look to the school initially, we're going to say, who are the people you want to retain? Who are the people that sell and that you would like to keep? And then we are going to reach out to those individuals, once we have approvals to get started on the process, and we're going to look to retain those people, and we're going to, you know, that placement. Once we have those people placed, then we would look at doing a job fair here, whether, a lot of times, we try to get that done on-site, so that people can come and see where it's at. Otherwise, we work a lot with Michigan Works and other companies like that to do job fairs within their offices, and our recruiter will come down, and we'll do like an all-day job fair. Usually, we'll start those in the afternoon and go a little bit into the evening, because a lot of times, people who are doing custodial work, they might have a daytime job, so we want to make sure that our recruiter is available to even those people at night as well, so she can get full shifts doing that way.
Talk to us about how are you going to train the employees, right? So will it be like the use of chemicals? Would it be like how to read M S T S, or things like that?
How do we train them?
Yeah, so just the training process, I mean, you know, because a lot of times, when we talk about custodial, right, you've got M S T S, material safety data sheet for your chemistry that you use, right? You've got a lot of things that they need to know, so how do you guys do that training process to bring the new employees up to speed?
So we start that process off with an online training, all our employees go through, they have twelve different modules that go from bloodborne pathogens to biohazards, S T S sheets, workplace safety, and they have to pass each one before moving on to the next one. So they have to receive a seventy-five percent score prior to moving on to the next one, the system won't allow them to do that. The convenience about that is that they can do it at their house, they can do it at Michigan Works building, anywhere there's a public computer, you know, a computer that they can use to do that. And then in addition to that, once they get through that process, that takes about two hours altogether, and they are paid to do that as well, that's once they've been hired. Then they go into on-the-job training, so that's about a sixteen-hour process, and that range is from, including account basics, where things are, what's going on within the buildings, S T S sheets, so, you know, each of our accounts has their own S T S sheets, and they're going to go through, with the account manager is going to go through all that stuff with them. It also involves boundaries training, so that we make sure that, you know, each of the individuals know how to, how to and not to interact with staff and students, and how to appropriately communicate. And then they will be on-the-job training as they're going through and they're starting their process, so the account manager, if we have a new hire that comes in, the account manager is going to work with them one-on-one to get them trained for that.
Thank you. If I can quickly piggyback off that?
Yes, yes, sir.
One of the key things in training a custodian is really onsite, like Jason mentioned, but they each have a run, and inside of the documents here, which we went over with, the administration was T D F, and it's a task documentation form, and so they need to sign off, and it shows them exactly what their run is going to be. Couple of different things, why that's of importance. If there is a call-off, if there is someone sick, or if there's a vacation, there's that run that's inside of that building, inside the janitor closet, the graphic clipboard, whoever it may be, is going to show them how they go through a building. The orientation is for chemistry, it's for your basic knowledge, but now you've got to show everyone what are the idiosyncrasies that are inside of every building, and it shows when they're going to take a break, when they're going to take a lunch, where they stop inside of their runs. On top of that, T D F is the supervisor checklist that Brian alluded to, and that is to be checked off and made sure that the corners are clean, the corners are swept. But not only are they clean, but were they, was it checked off, and was it checked off and not clean? And so inside of that is the audit form that, you know, Brian, you know, may be doing, but then that's when our manager, our account manager, tours the buildings every day to make sure that those items are all being performed accurately.
Thank you. Mrs. Momini?
You do background checks and road testing?
One hundred percent.
So what about, say tonight, we have at seven o'clock, a performance in the Performing Arts Center, right? Or, let's go back, let's, say you got some after-school programs that go until nine o'clock at night, how are you going to make sure those are clean, those rooms are, facilities they're using are clean, and they're not missed the next morning, correct?
One of the key things we want to set up in the transition phase is whoever is in charge of performing arts, or athletic director, or the building principal, we want to have a weekly meeting with our account manager and the individual that's in charge of their building, and that could be one person, and that's some of the things that Brian and myself and Mark and Mike did work out, of how do we want that communication to take place? And that can be... And that can be, um, on SchoolDude or on our Google Doc, which we discussed inside here. But then, what does take place? And so to answer that question, is there going to go through that building a little bit differently possibly? So they end with taking care of the Performing Arts Center, or they end taking care of the cafeteria here as far as the end of the day type, type of cleaning. To prepare for this, it could be the day staff that, uh, we have the diagram set up of exactly how you want to organize. We want maps and diagrams of all those items. And then at that night, the custodians would come through, this would be the last thing that they would do while the rest of the buildings are already clean. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Servants? CMS, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, uh, lawn services bid award recommendations?
Yes, thank you. Um, we submitted a request to include a recommendation to accept, uh, C N R Lawn Services proposal for the lawn mowing and trimming services of the Ben Harper area schools, occupied and active facilities. And to also make a recommendation to accept Harper Shine Lawns Care proposal for the lawn mowing and trimming services of Ben Harper area schools, unoccupied and inactive facilities, as detailed in the B H A S lawn mowing and trimming RFP that was distributed company second. Or I'm sorry, this being reviewed soon. Um, we did post, uh, publicly post the RFP to solicit these services for mowing and trimming for the upcoming two thousand seventeen, eighteen lawn season. Uh, we had six applicants, or six companies applying, or responding, I should say, to the RFP. Um, again, the proposals were all reviewed by the district leadership review team, uh, in conjunction with a big tabulation. Uh, the review team narrowed the list of bidders down to the two most viable bids and checked their references. Uh, the district review team selected C N R Lawn Services, again, for the occupied active facilities, and Harper Shine Lawn Care for the unoccupied and active facilities, because both the companies' proposals were the most effective in pricing response to the RFP, while also supporting our local members of our community.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding mowing services, bid awards, recommendations?
I have a question, so why two? Why not just one lawn service to?
When we wrote the RFP, we broke out, uh, each of the properties separately and offered incentives. We did them in different fashions, depending on what the company's preferences were. Certain companies, of course, had the ability to accommodate larger-scale projects, some smaller. We wouldn't want to put a company in a position where they might be a good fit for us in, for a, for a section of, of buildings, but not a good fit for the entire, in their entirety. So we took all that into consideration and designed the RFP. Um, these two particular companies came back, um, and gave their combined bids for the occupied and then the other forty, unoccupied, um, were the best cost benefit to the district, uh, based on their credit checks, or I'm sorry, not credit checks, but their, um, reverence checks, thank you. Um, uh, both these companies, uh, had demonstrated in within local community and local school districts the ability to attend to a district of our size and to provide the type of services that we, uh, this district would like to handle.
So what are the savings that we compare to last year with one service provider? Are we saving with two service providers, or is it the same amount? We are saving, saving from three different, we are saving. Thank you. Any other questions? This is Donald.
What is essential for mowing? And care of the actual trimming procedures? We want to know.
Yes, trimming is required with all mowers. Uh, hedging, which is a more detailed, uh, action which we included, I mean, very similar, only at our sidewalks and home and things of that nature. Um, that's done by, I think, by season, twice a season, or on reflex, is actually what caused that. Additional service needed. Uh, these pick up at the beginning of the season, at the end of the season, as well as additional capital costs, uh, cost item, uh, for both companies also.
So, from my understanding correctly, that is twice a year, but who might be like, you mustn't call them?
No, 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 mowing and trimming, they'll go regularly. Every ten days, either max. Yeah, I'm sorry, the hedging is twice, twice a year. A long-form hedging where they actually bring in and kind of trench out lawn, the hedging in your pay place should be about a half in separation from the way the grass and soil.
I have a question about...
This is Molly.
Last time of the day, are they going to be doing this mowing at the occupied buildings?
The schedule, or the RFP, uh, required for mowing to be done, uh, off, off-hours when students are not present after four P M. Uh, also on the weekends, and then to be arranged with each building principal as being, you know, their friends.
Miss McGowan?
Okay, oh, are these guys going to consider cars that are parked? Because that's been the issue, because they just look by and by, and we've got students brought in your vehicle and we have to care about.
I can't speak for severe of these companies, uh, based on my conversations with their references. I don't anticipate having challenges of that nature. One is actually, of course, down here, Harper Shores, uh, companies provide services on a fair amount of that singular, like, um, school business. Um, I've seen any in the, in the, and that, uh, it can happen, um, to, 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 to.
It's just that we're most, we're trying to be the first. It's just this, right? A lot of them seem to be...
So, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Up to curriculum and instruction, uh, provision, uh, field trips, science and social studies, bid awards, summer school proposals, and mathematics renewal and extension of service.
So for field trips, I have several of them that schools are requesting.
We have more than five. That's what we, I mean, you can ask for them. We don't give them. But that's, we look at the volunteers. People volunteer to talk to the students. So in the past, I mean, we've had parents that have come and said, hey, you want this? Absolutely. They do that. You know, volunteers are willing to pursue. I'll have it added to this to our, but I was asking for my, for being here and also giving us some interest in how this happens. How that's working. If you didn't catch this now. And so I will be honest and say that I will have a hard time with proving that there are only five because of issues. I think it needs to be proact.
The seats?
Yes, to add to that, I'm also looking at the La- Laboratory and MSU. And it's sixty-four students with almost four shelves. And so is that because we don't have volunteers?
That is, I know if we review the graduates, that's probably taken because those students have been invited into groups and there's a lot of special facilities for the students. So there's like guys at school.
Okay, and also say that you stay and you don't, and you utilize those other things that go on in there. So could you see it?
Any other questions? Science and social studies, be able to order?
We have two recommendations for the middle school, science and cultural studies. The science team would like to recommend the McGraw-Hill grade eight, twelve. I'm actively reading the review that she likes impressed with products, new materials, and online resources. And this is indicated in the review. The cost will be between one hundred and ninety-four thousand and two hundred and three thousand dollars. In fact, they're, you know. The social studies team would like to recommend Pearson for grade eight, eighth, and TCI for grade nine and twelve. I assume social studies students have been using a free portion of the TCI materials that have been developed. The team for programs, they chose as a part students, they were blessed to break the whole conscious then. A five presentation of the program will be over by eighteen months, about six twelve to be implemented during the twenty-seventh week. The cost will be one hundred and fifty-two and one hundred and fifty-two. Thank you. It's recommended that we love programs and ensure that we go to the full session. It's more that you're posted, rest of the price for closer, finance, for science, culture, science, provide the program. Public science, culture, science, standards, RFP, student, corporate student materials, training, science, building, doing something. The companies have a fine level below. Then, once you see, both of them are leadership in YouTube. The science and social science teams, they're going to do the products using the written checklists that scream as you can. We have the two, what's reading, companies over there, so let's see. They're representing with open people, the subcommittee, and the administration. And we have a couple things from those kids who try to kind of bring us to be clear. This paper, that can, this fellow, this, 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 that.
Our science and social studies committee in January, February, and April. At these meetings, we were given information about the process of obtaining new programs, learn about the standards we need to teach, and list the characteristics that we're looking for in the programs we would choose to purchase. The RFP was posted in February and in March it was closed. We met in April to review the programs, those companies that responded to the RFP. We were very excited to review the process, thank opening presents on Christmas tonight. We use a checklist to help guide us as we review the materials for each program. For science, the committee for kindergarten through fifth grade was drawn to the McGraw-Hill Inspire Science Program for the following reasons. A fast track is provided, a runner icon is placed next to those lessons that have to be taught to meet a standard. Those that do not have the, have the icon may be skipped when times limited. The illustrations include career kids representing our student demographics and various scientists' careers. Resources are easy to use, each student will have a science notebook focusing on writing, a variety of exciting online resources are included, terminology and testing procedures are in line with our staff. Online and face-to-face professional development is available, all materials are available in Spanish, and level readers are included. For social studies, the committee for kindergarten through fifth grade was drawn to the Pearson My World Program. Content is taught through reading, writing, and storytelling, reading and writing is included in every class. Lessons are a blend of digital and print materials, exciting songs and videos are included, assessments are customizable, all materials are available in Spanish, level readers are included, and online and face-to-face professional development is available.
Hello, I reviewed the middle school portion of the McGraw-Hill. And some of the things that I really found particular, I have a copy of the textbook, just from what we've been using and our materials lately, just visually, it is beautiful. We were instantly drawn to the colors and the pictures and just how vivid it is. Again, it aligns with the curriculum perfectly, very student-friendly, very colorful, very engaging. Each chapter begins with activating prior knowledge. That's the first thing you see, what do you know, and it does it in different ways. Key vocabulary is addressed initially as soon as you, you know, on the first page. Throughout the readings, there are constant reading checks to make sure the kids are staying on pace, make sure they know what they're reading, they're not just flowing, flowing along with the reading. Also, in every chapter throughout, there are what they call math skills. We're literally, if it's earth science, it'll be math skills addressed within the chapter. So we're not only teaching science, but we have embedded math in, in there. As Ms. Bellows said, the notebooks are also included for middle school. So there's a tremendous amount of writing, which is key for our students. And each student is provided with a, a writing notebook, which is, I believe those were seven years that we'd be provided with those materials from the company. So it's not just a one-time shot. The lesson reviews are very differentiated. You know, the chapter review would have graphic organizers, graphs, charts, not just your traditional questions. I really like that because as we see on M-Step, lots of charts, lots of graphs, lots of different things that our kids aren't used to, that haven't been addressed in our textbooks that we previously used. And most importantly, to myself, there are online pre and post tests for each chapter. And not only is that a district requirement that we're doing these online pre and post tests, but it's always, also a state requirement. Some of us have felt the burden of having, you know, especially in middle school and high school level, hundreds of students. And to personally hand grade hundreds of pre and post tests for every chapter or unit is very cumbersome. And these are online. So it would be something that would really free a lot of teacher time because the students would be doing these tests online, which would be graded online, which would have instantaneous data, you know, freeing up, freeing our time up to bolster our lessons and pay our lessons. So those are my biggest reasons why we chose this one. Again, it's absolutely hitting the candy store when we saw these books, just how excited it would be to be able to use these, to teach these materials. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Orin. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Valerie Krieger. I've been here twenty-three years. And after looking through the different curriculums, I had a revelation. And I kind of thought about, I shouldn't say this out loud, to my colleagues who were in the room. And Doug said, you should say it, you need to say what's on your mind. So I, I walked over to Trish and I said, what I had to say, and can you just put that in an email? So I did. So I'm just going to read you the email that I presented to Dr. Walker and Ms. Robinson. Good afternoon, Dr. Walker. I wanted to pass on a revelation that I had yesterday while looking through the science curriculum choices with the other science teachers after school. First, though, I want to express that after teaching in Benton Harbor for twenty-three years and spending many, many, many evenings at home, developing my own curriculum, my own lessons due to a lack of one, I have become a tired person. One who oftentimes does not have the energy after a day of work to attend to my own personal needs or that of my family. Updating my resume, and this is going to be hardly here, has been on the forefront of my mind. You don't see teachers here anymore after twenty-three years. However, and this is in bold, after looking through the possible choices for curriculum and hearing that we will be acquiring a new curriculum, I felt an energy and a revital- revitalization that literally made me feel like a kid in a candy store. I was especially excited about one of the companies, and that's McGraw-Hill, the i-science in particular, and literally wanted to sneak it out. I wanted to take it out and take it back to my classroom and start it the next day. I was that excited about it. Had I been able to sneak it out, I would have. I, I tried to get Trish to do it the other way, just so I could sneak it. Knowing that we will be getting a, a new curriculum, an actual, real curriculum, makes me no longer feel the need to update my resume and look for a job that isn't quite so mentally and physically draining. I can't stop smiling at the possibilities of what I can accomplish with my students and what my students can accomplish next year. I just wanted to let you know how important it is to me and countless other teachers to know that this district is finally serious about doing what is right for our kids. Purchasing these new curricula is no doubt going to possibly keep me and other teachers like me here in the district. And like my group of these gentlemen said, it's key to keep your employees here. This makes me excited. Knowing that we're, we're going to possibly purchase one of these makes me want to stay. I don't want to leave.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I did also reach out to the other home schools, Lake Shore and Coloma, who are also using this exact curriculum. And they had nothing but positive things to say, nothing. They did say, even if it's Lake Shore, a lot of their students do not have computers at home, which kind of surprised me, but I guess that's true. So the lady said, had she had to do it all over again, she would have ordered a textbook for every student. So I'm advocating for that. It may sound like a lot of money, but it's going to be so worth it.
Just one second. So questions from board, we'll start with Mrs. Mommy.
I believe Robinson, that one of the first has an engaging song. He's really been on the floor.
No, I didn't have the, the software. It was on, sorry. But I will be happy to invite you to the classroom once we have one.
Okay, thanks, Dan. There was. I have, I have concern, you know, this is like, you know, the battle back and forth. Yeah, I'm going to have textbooks, but they cost the textbook. We have to have them chained down somehow, so they don't just care. And these textbooks are ultimately expensive as well. My grandpa stayed at college. And, and he had failed in that in the past. And so whatever he decided, we better have a system in place to make sure those textbooks return to us and they're there the next year for the next year's meeting.
And that was discussed, you know, that's an issue, both the science and the social studies team discussed that faster and how the teachers could possibly send one more to that kind of thing without the textbook going home and disappearing. So if the teachers are aware, I do plan to make sure that we have one.
Do you have a question? From board? I just, I walked in and looked at the, some of the science team, right? So that's what I'm asking. And so I, I think that's awesome because I looked at biology, you know, chemistry, all the good stuff, right? Because that's, this is twenty-first century education, right? We, we got our game, it's about technology. So I'm appreciative, looking at all of those, the social studies, you know, to your point, that was wild, that's popping out to me, so good job. It's about time we got books, we need it, we need the curriculum. So thank for the efforts and the board are the next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Summer school proposal.
Okay, so you have the summer school proposal for summer school, twenty-seventeen. This will involve students in grade eight and twelve. So inner harbor area schools will hold summer school programs for students who are entering into kindergarten, twelfth grade, and fall programs through house, international, academic academy, and MLK, arts and communication academy, treatment academy, and other. Students will begin kindergarten, eighth grade, and the fall, hold this one, on the school reading and math school, allowing the eighth, eighth, and the curriculum. They will also need their comprehensive skills and understanding math concepts at all levels, using the tools and the workarities. Using basic math stuff, that's just math, science, and I feel like that will also be interesting. The elementary middle school and ninth grade programs will team with K-10, elementary class, this will be placed within the middle, middle, senior, junior. Students who will be ninth grades in the fall will have a heavy focus of math on their sixth, and their sixth grade. They will utilize current, current material, I've shared in lessons, to try to work with. Students in grade ten, twelve grades in the fall, if needed, will have the option. Roll and crack recovery to take classes. Obviously, will be the best way that students receive their instruction. Dates of the program, July eleventh, twenty seventeen, through August seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and eight, instruction, nine o'clock, twelve o'clock, or eight of eight, nine o'clock, twenty-five, or nine of twelve. The initial goals are outlined there that this program aligns with, I also include some data. Also, our implementation process, checks indicating some of the current. I've indicated some of those trends and weaknesses, where the signs that we have, one of the things that will be posted each year that will help with getting these students right, coming into those programs or into those schools, that we're making today, in full term time. The bottom line, we have an estimated business impact, and this program is title.
Questions, comments, concerns, we start with Mrs. Galloway and Mrs. Mommy.
That's what I've been discussing, to teach finance at all levels in middle school, in life experience, you know, the first steps of being informed, and learning how to track whatever creates a, 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 and like the board and dealing with, and, 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 and once, you know, they learn the rules, and, 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 and so for low and great, um, source, and, 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 and , and, 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 and , and, 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 and,[1244.62]
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? I just have one final question. So the ninth year, parents will get a, I guess, what can you say? Can you give us about something to do that? But what happened so they didn't show up for the evening? They didn't show up for the conference, did we send them a letter to them?
So that's actually.
Okay, I see. Reminder notes. Gotcha. All right, next up, mathematics renewal and extension service.
It's not always recommended, but the current mathematical area will be new. Also, the subscription for mathematics and the materials that are coming into it. Oh, it's mine as well. Also, this question is 102,000. How much is yours on service? In addition to the, we have to continue to maintain the maximum. I'd like to currently consult. It's a team to provide support to teachers for bringing those grand here and in the common. This will be eleven weeks training for our mathematics students. And the F9 is scheduled for families associated by the current consultants to help the idea of being an initiative. This might be a experience of appearance destruction, this is a research. And if they're in progress as well. I'll recommend the continuation of teacher training and support between 17, 28 to the date of the grant. You know, this is what he said, the class of course, which was training for math. I do think that's a five or two. Perfectly, it's a parent. He only wants to get some, he's got these in order. This intervention period is going to be based on sales and focus intervention. Students raised ages nine will also access the free online math support for mental health donation that's outlined in the document.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the math renewal and extension? So I have a question. Mrs. Robinson. Great. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Dr. Walker sent to administration, Head Start lease and the intergovernmental agreements were very decent.
Thank you. So the Head Start staff came and presented to myself and Mr. Leonard the college lease before you. Initially, there was an effort to switch their programming to certain of your children, which was a huge concern for Benson Harbor for our four-year-olds. Conversations were had about web to state level about their intent. And ultimately, we collaborated and compromised back to what you have before you. So the bottom line is that the Head Start program would like to lease the three modulators on the property of, at the core of the D C, the early childhood site. They want those three modulators to run their program from, you can see the cost that they're proposing there. And they filled this with the ample space to house programming for four-year-olds. They also, they have a member site in Benson Harbor. We talked explicitly about, you know, ensuring that our students are not taken to a non-Benson Harbor site. If, you know, that this really is truly the home race space. And if you recall in the memo to, I sent you a summary of my reading when the Tri-County said, just so you all would have context to the concerns that we presented. However, after talking with them and considering options, the benefit to the district to have. To have the. Thank you. To have the other half of that building for our young four and five-year-olds could be advantageous. Also, because we don't know how we may grow, told to receive more students. So those very most, you know, we said, okay, this could be advantageous. So I am going to next week recommend that the board accept this request from Tri-County Head Start to lease the three modulators. They will get their numbers with them, what they propose their numbers will be, and how they propose to set up. And it does make sense. It's just a little tiny window for space. They, again, they've shortened that their focus to bring the four-year-old population of students and they will keep the kids here in Benson Harbor.
Thank you. So any questions?
Okay. From the, when I think of my, I was red. Where is their playground, okay?
Um, let's see. We talked about.
You gave a problem. It first. The lease was then, that was kind of picked over. Playground space.
I just think it is more of a.
I want to help me, Mr. Bryant, as well, but I believe that there was a, that understanding that there would be some sharing of the playground space, which we are renewing. That's another conversation we'll bring to you all when we are, and I guess, you're going to remember to you looking to redo the playground and those things around at that location. I don't know, Mr. Leonard has anything he wants to add specifically, but I do believe there is going to be some sharing of the playground space.
I don't remember specifically related to that during our conversation. That's what we thought a lot. Now, the expectation that our, that we participate in the playground structure, that we're going to exploit. Dr. Walker, we are possibly, possibly, we are, we require them to code to our, like, not that we have to be trained in practice, but we have the.
I recall in the past, there was a, we can't share. So we begin with this, we don't want to enter the situation where we assume there's going to be sharing in the next one. Uh huh. Our regulations say we can share.
We'll follow up because that wasn't, you know, that wasn't discussed in the concern. So I don't, whatever they're currently doing.
Discussing that.
Good. We will follow up because whatever arrangements they currently have, I would assume we're going to retain those. This was strictly just a change in their fiscal location. So we're working, doing something this year. I can't articulate it, but Ms. Robinson says.
There's actually two separate playgrounds at D C. So that's what they went out. I know a principal, if we're raising, if we're wanting to be allowed enough to activate to. It's okay.
No, actually, we're in the midst of reworking the playground structures at D C Hall and M L K. All three of those facilities have some issues that may be attended to. We've been working with G M B architecture and area layout, site planning, development, the scope of our limits and doing what we can to accomplish what we can. As far as the core of the fourth project, you can see the playground structure in conjunction with some of our upcoming efforts for some of our partners. Will be more than ample enough to accommodate any sort of capacity that has. So I would say too, we just need to just install the playground using the contract or we vote it for next week. Right? So let's separate that from the contract. Okay. So Dr. Walker, the intergovernmental agreement, very recent.
So you have before you the intergovernmental agreements that merit process presented to either should for technology business operations and H R. And the renewal that Dr. Irish provided. There are four main areas of change, I'm sorry, to be aware of. In these intergovernmental agreements, there is, I think it's a two percent, I'm going to verify that. A two percent raise for the merit and visa staff that's built into the cost. There is the expectation that the merit and visa staff will work their visa hours. And that's what's clearly defined. There are two others. Sorry, I'm going to bring the flares. I'm going to get that for you in a minute. But other than that, the intergovernmental agreements are, you know, very similar to what the board has approved in the past, providing services in those four offices for the daily operations of the district.
So any questions, comments, concerns regarding the intergovernmental agreement, very recent?
And I have the other two. I'm so sorry I couldn't overdo. The termination notice was changed from 180 days to 90 days. And there's a 10% health insurance cost increase that is reflected in the cost. And when we negotiated with Treasury to get Mr. Leonard for facility support when Miss Liberal resigned, there was a mission we didn't know in terms of provide that support. And we didn't have the funds to do it. So based on the financial operating plan, we negotiated for Treasury to reverse this for this year for Mr. Leonard's services. But moving into that year, the district has to incur those costs and we were able to do that based on projections. So that's another change that will not be Treasury reverse. So those are the five changes, if you would, it's in the new contract, but everything else is the same.
Thank you.
Are visas hours at different and hours for days off?
It's a noticeable difference, yes. Their staff, and I can't quote it to you because, you know, we are always working, so we just work. I don't know if the staff over here can either because they work. I think they only work until four or four thirty, eight to four thirty maybe. Yeah. And then something on Fridays that a half an hour earlier and, yes, they are caught.
Yeah.
They have, their offices are closed, like during the winter break, for example, and their staff get those five days and we work. So there are some noticeable differences, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Also, the head office is technology business operations. Artisan School presentation, Mr. Hill.
Correct. So thank you, Mr. Hill. While he's coming, I know that a couple of the board members had an opportunity to hear a little bit from Mr. Hill. To hear a little bit from Mr. Hill when he came and spoke to the staff. This is an opportunity that is being considered through the partnership agreement. We have a partner that is very interested in the services of Partners of Schools as I am and as I know, Mrs. Robinson and Dr. Markovich looked at them. When we were, when we applied in the fall for another school program grant, which we did not get, but we were planning to, to receive the support of Partners of Schools at that time. I happened to come across them again in January. Didn't even realize it was the same company, liked what I saw. Their focus, the center of our unders, high quality underserved students in urban areas, populations very akin to Benson Harbor's populations. And so we just account for the common awareness and passion for children and rapid, rapid, rapid turnaround. And so Mr. Hill and the company that he represents, they have some information that I'd like for the board to see. As this is an option that is being considered and again, one of our partners is really interested in helping us fund Partners of School. This would be very foundation funding only. It would not be title funds, well, potentially no title funds and definitely no general fund. But the biggest advantage to, well, there are many, but one of the biggest advantages is it does provide us with what I call capacity. If you go back to the partnership agreement, we have an area of leadership capacity where we have so many tasks that are immediate. And especially with the agreement, we have people through the Partners of Schools that have experiences that we could capitalize on to help us move forward at a more rapid pace. So there are lots of other things. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill and he can share with you what he associates.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Walker. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. Thank you for having me. My name is William Hill. I'm the regional executive director for Partners in School Innovation. We are a school and urban district transformation organization. We specialize in urban schools that serve large numbers of African-American, Latino, and D L students in poverty. Those are not only districts we work in, those are not only districts that we're interested in, to be perfectly honest with you. So this work is near and dear to our heart. In order to work for our organization, you must have been either a high-performing teacher in an urban environment and/or a high-performing principal or superintendent in an urban environment. So our staff can hit the ground running quickly because they've done the work before and they know that it can be done. So. Keep going. You can see our mission there. And I assume you all have the slide presentation on your computers. That's good. So I'll keep going. Who am I appointing to for the clip? Okay, got you. Thank you very much. So again, we specialize in improving teaching and learning roles, performing schools. In looking at your partnership agreement, there are some very aggressive goals in that partnership agreement. The high expectations of this community, the school board are definitely present in that partnership agreement, and that's exciting. Our role, I'll be perfectly honest, is we're implementation experts. Once you have an idea, you say you want to go down a path, our job is to come alongside you and do everything within our power to actually help you realize those goals. As you can see, we were founded by former McKinsey and Company partner, Rowan Scholar, in 1993. So we've been at this for about 25 years. We're in the fifth year of a national scale plan. Primarily, we were on the West Coast, in the Bay Area, and in California. Now we're also, we've been in Michigan for five years. We're also in Philadelphia and soon to be in New York. We've done work in Mississippi as well as deep down in the Delta, the poorest, poorest school district in the country, actually. And will soon be forty schools in Brooklyn as well. So you can see some of the places that we've worked. And in terms of our work, it's equity-based approach. I know that word, that term can be loaded, particularly in certain communities. When we say equity, what we mean is justice to each person with what they are due, to each child what they are due. What we know is that some children are further from the point of success than others. And so the steps, how we intervene and support those children look and feel different. And particularly, how we work with urban students looks and feel different. And you all, you board members of an urban school district, so you know, this is not the same as operating in a wealthy, middle-class district. We specialize in bringing in the systems and structures of high-performing schools, districts, schools and districts. That's what we do. We begin in the systems and structures places, making sure that we're coming alongside teachers and supporting them. Making sure that we're coming alongside leaders and supporting them. Helping them understand their data, playing lessons that are culturally responsive, culturally responsibly relevant. Also, we do everything from modeling instruction to walkthroughs, to really becoming a thought partner, executive coach, and a peer for the folks that we support, both in the school and in the central office. So you can see some of our outcome data there. Eighty-four, two percent of Partners of Schools significantly increased the number of students reading at grade level or above. Of those seventy-nine percent outpaced state and district schools. In Grand Rapids, we were in five schools. Of those five, four of them were on the priority list. Not only one of them are there after four years in Mountain Creek. We were in three schools and a district office and the entire district was on the bubble for takeover and that unautomatically changed as well. So we have a, we have a, we've only been in the Midwest for five years, but we're already having some big success here with students that look very similar to yours. The next few slides are longitudinal results for you to see. We always begin with results because as you all know, anyone can sit up here and actually sell you a bit of goods. We start off with results because we want you to understand that what we do works. This work is not easy. It's very difficult, as you know. But it's the work that we've committed and dedicated our lives to doing. And so we're really passionate about, about black, brown, Latino students who are struggling and who are in poverty. It's our mission statement, so. Again, what we know from research is that if an urban school or district that has been failing for years, and what we mean by years, fifteen years or more, research says it takes about seven years of doing the right work to get those schools or that district turned completely around. What we say is if you implement our approach, you can get it done in five. Now, the work that Dr. Walker and I are talking about is really over a three-year period of time that represents the partnership agreement. And so within those three years, we think that we can actually help the district definitely get on a firm foundation and be going in the right direction by the time we work ourselves out of a job. And that's really what we do. Our job is not to come alongside a school or a district and have them become dependent on us. It really is we're working ourselves out of the job. So we come in, we provide the support. It's very much a I do, we do, you do. And by the time we leave, the school and the districts are holding all the work that we do. And that, and that's the idea of our approach, one of the central ideas of our approach. This slide here, the school transformation framework, shows you some of the systems that we work in. And the process where, where rather than what we call rosy results oriented cycles of Maycore, if you remember the whole plan, new study act model. This is that steroids, if you will, informed by data. We actually establish a data dashboard for the district. What we help the superintendent do is to automatize or automate everything so that she's not looking or wondering what the attendance percentage was. She's not waiting for that. That is coming in on a dashboard every day. So when she has her standing meeting at seven, eight o'clock in the morning, she can see what attendance was yesterday. And that's teacher attendance and student attendance, plus the most recent assessment data. We want it front and center in the, in the teachers, the principals, the superintendents face so that they can actually make informed decisions at a timely manner. One of the things about struggling districts is oftentimes they're looking for data that they already have access to. Or it's so much data that it's not organized because of the need for the manpower to do it. And so we help to automate those processes and systems. Again, you see more evidence of impact slides here. And if you have any questions as we go, feel free to ask those or you can jot them down and we can talk at the end of fine either way. Next slide, please. This began in, is in Grand Rapids. That was one of the schools that was formerly a priority school as well. This school was, even though our focus is around instruction, what we know is that when students actually receive a quality education, they're more likely to come to school. They actually behave when they get there. So M L K is one of those examples where attendance increased dramatically, where teacher attendance increased dramatically. Where office referrals and suspensions increased dramatically, all because we improved the quality of what was actually happening in those classrooms. And because we're a school transformation organization, we come alongside your people. We're not here to replace them in any way, shape, or form. Our job is literally whoever, whoever we're assigned to, we actually believe in people. So our goal is not to evaluate anyone, not to set them up, to remove them. It's if we come in, we are here to make sure that you realize what's in that partnership agreement. So those goals, you have a 15% target increase in both reading and math in the first eighteen months. And then in the second eighteen months, you have another 15%. So that's 30% in thirty-six months. Those are ambitious goals. And so I've, I've tried to scare Dr. Walker off several times. I've had some very candid conversations with her around the nature of this work. We're going to have to hit the ground running and all be pointing in the same direction, making sure that we're on the same page, you know, if that's the good ones. So those are good, they're strong, and they're ambitious, which says that you believe in kids, which is one of the reasons why we're here presenting to them. Again, you see some more Battle Creek data. We have national data as well. One of the lessons that I've learned since being here in East Coast, so why the lessons that I've learned since being in the Midwest, the way folks want to see Midwest data. And so that's why primarily we're focusing, we're focusing on this. The school transformation report, whenever we target with a new district or a new school, we do what we call a comprehensive needs assessment. So we come in and actually look at what's the quality of teaching in the classrooms? What, what's the culture like in the schools? Do kids feel safe? We talk to students, we talk to teachers, we talk to staff, we talk to the central office hosts. And so we don't just come in and start dictating, pushing around. It's not the way that we have worked. We actually do the comprehensive needs assessment and then we report back up to the superintendent and the principals. And they actually decide where they want to get started first. We have a seventy-six point rubric. That rubric is around practices, mindsets, heartsets of high-performing urban schools and districts. So what can those schools and districts do? What does it look like and what does it feel like in practice? Now here's kind of where you all landed with that evaluation. What do you want to do first? Where do you want to get started? Now eventually, we're going to get to all of it, but we make sure that we start wherever our client wants to begin. So this is a traditional staffing model and we're intensive in the district. We have a district partnership director. That person is really lockstep with Dr. Walker and her team. That person is usually a former cabinet-level person in an urban school district. So it's not only someone who can help, there's someone who knows the work. And so if Dr. Walker could benefit from having the chief academic officer type person, then we hire that person and bring them in. It's really whatever the need is, but she gets a horse, basically. Someone else who's not just sitting at a desk looking pretty, it's someone who can actually be in the field and deliver for Dr. Walker and her team. Same thing happens at the school with our staff as well. This, this slide right here is a semi-complicated slide, but it's essential for the data dashboard. Again, one of the challenges that we face is that what's happening in that kindergarten classroom across the district isn't necessarily making it to the superintendent or to the principal in a timely manner. The idea is to make sure that that data is flowing quickly and make it into the decision makers in time enough so that we can actually make good decisions, sound decisions, to actually change outcomes. So by the time that we assess for the year, we're not praying when our results come back, like, oh, I wonder what we're going to get. We should know what they're going to be roughly when the kids actually sit down and take the test. Coherence at all levels of the district. That's what we're looking at. I was actually excited about the hearing about the textbook purchase. Those are the kind of things that are really, really important. Again, in failing urban districts, usually they don't have a common reading program, they don't have a common math program, they're missing textbooks. So students don't actually have access to the kind of instruction that they need to even test well. And sometimes we find folks who, we're going to focus on reading all morning and math all afternoon. Well, the author of the book did not say, well, these kids don't know science and these kids don't know social studies, so I'm not going to use any of that vocabulary when I write my book. It just doesn't work like that in the real world. And so I'm excited to hear that those things are actually coming along. Here you see a theory of action. It's one of the first things that we do. We help each school, each department that we work in set SMART go, specific, measurable, attainable, time bound. And we add smarte, equitable. So if, once we desire. So if, once we disaggregate data, if your females, special ed students are failing, what are we going to do differently about them? So we make sure that we understand and help, um, teachers and leaders understand what's actually going on with each population of students, right? And so if anyone's failing, how would we rally around those students, those children, to help them become successful? So supportive and challenging each other. This is how does a partnership look and feel. Supportive and challenging each other. Um, we call it our partnering phase of the work. So we build relationships in order to get the work done, right? Um, so we're not just to show up to be Trish's friend and to be Dr. Walker's friend. We're actually depositing in those relationships so that we can push them out of their comfort zone to get them moving faster than they necessarily would normally move in a particular area. And we'll be right there alongside to say, I think that, you can do it, you can do it. But, but the idea is to work alongside teachers, to work alongside leaders, to help them move as fast as they possibly can to actually change outcomes for kids. Um, and that means we're all in a learning space, right? And that's difficult. Um, oftentimes in these positions, we have people who are doing nothing but demanding from us. Um, and so having someone who's on your team that can actually help them execute day in and day out is actually really important. Um, collaborative, we make sure, um, that again, our client needs are what we're focused on. So we don't have an agenda. Our only agenda is what you tell us, that you let the work in. And right now, you have your partnership agreement, and you have a lot of work laid out in partnership agreement. So, uh, shared vision, lead others together, energizing fifty-fifty. I would change that fifty-fifty to a hundred-hundred. So we're all in, right? And I've said to Dr. Walker, I've said to Trish, like, if this is just one of those political moves where you're trying to show a few people that you're doing something for poor black and brown kids, we're not your organization for that. Because we are truth tellers. Um, and we come in and we start moving things around and helping you to move them when you say you want to. So if you say you want high-performing teachers, well, what are those practices? Let's put those in place, right? So we're not, we're not gonna waste time, we're not gonna play any games. We cost too much and we're too good at what we do in order to do that. So just like your reputation is on the line, ours is on the line as well. And we're not gonna jeopardize or compromise ourselves with people who are playing with kids, so. And I'm using strong language because I want to evoke an emotional response before you make a decision on if you want to partner with us. Um, transformational change is profoundly human enterprise. Adult change theory, as you all know, getting adults to do something different, especially what they've been teaching for twenty years the same way, and it used to work for fifteen of those twenty. It's really hard to get folks to do something different, right? And we, we know that. How, how often have our wives, our husbands asked us to change when we put our clothes and how long that takes? So, um, anyway, there's a lot of science behind that. We specialize in that science and helping people do to make those changes in a thoughtful, supportive way. I'm trying not to read each and every slide to you. I know it's been, it's a late night, so, but as you have questions, please write them down. I talked about this a little bit, what a partnership looks like. Um, again, we are a transformation organization. What you have outlined in your partnership agreement is rapid transformation for your school district. That's what you have. This is not take six months to figure it out, let's hold hands and sing kumbaya. This is hit the ground and let's rock and roll right now if we're gonna hit that. Because every moment that we waste, that eighteen-month deadline is gonna be living really, really quickly. In three years, it's nothing in an urban district, right? How many of you can remember what you did last Friday? It's, it's, the time goes by really, really fast. And so we need to come in, we need to get your needs assessment done and make some really big decisions real fast around what, what happens first and when. Um, because kids will be coming, kids will be going off break and they'll be coming back. And the teachers will be coming back really soon, so. So that's my two cents. Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Ms. McGowan first?
Yeah, you said that it usually takes seven years to turn around in a district. And is that what you found for actual real growth? And turnaround is to be seven years, years and years?
So that's what the research says. That's pretty consistent. We've, um, Allen Rock in California, when we got there, they were very much in your situation. They were actually the lowest performing school district in California. Um, we were able to get there in five of them. They had a phenomenal superintendent, which is why I'm so excited about Dr. Walker. She reminds me of that leader a lot, someone who actually knows the work and isn't afraid to push. Um, so they had almost all the ingredients that they needed. They just needed a partner to help them execute. And so we were able to actually get there in five. That superintendent ended up winning California State Superintendent of the Year. They outpaced every other district in growth. Um, so there are exceptions to that, right? But it really depends on what you already have in place. And to be perfectly honest, how willing people are to make the hard decisions and keep kids at the center. Right? Because some of this stuff, the decisions that we're gonna have to make, will be hard decisions, right? But the real question is, is this about, do I really believe that poor black and brown kids can perform out of however? Am I going to give them what they need in order to be healthy and correct, right? Um, and if that's the assumption you're all ready working from, we can actually get a lot done in a, in a short period of time. If we actually have to spend a lot of time helping people believe that and change their mindset, that actually slows them down. So it still will happen, but it really depends on what level that is already present and what level it's not. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I know, I, I mean, I'm taught in the district.
Okay.
So I'm looking for new programs and behaviors and stuff. So I'm looking for real growth. They don't want us to drag in where it's, yeah, here's a baby to show that we're actually not. So my concern is, you know, if it's seven years, you know, probably being realistic, trying to turn it around in three. I think as long as we show real growth, that, that should be our focus.
So you say turnaround. I think that's where we have to align what that means. Turnaround in three years doesn't mean every issue is fixed and every kid is high flyer. Turnaround means you have still structures, processes, expectations, accountability, and you're abandoning this upward spiral to improving outcomes for kids. Which means that on that journey, you should see an increase every year in efficiency. Because all of these other pieces have turned around and are properly aligned. So, so it's not just about the percentage of data of growth that we want to measure, but it's also about the, the foundation that we're building and how we are helping our staff grow and understand their work, as Mr. Hill has said. So that ultimately, we are self-sustaining. Uh, we don't, you know, we're not trying to partner with partners of school because we don't know what we're doing. We, we understand the process of rapid turnaround. Again, the issue goes back to capacity and leadership and magnitude of all the foundational things that need to be done and all the work that needs to be done across each of the buildings to impact, um, just what Mr. Hill was speaking of, that mentality, the mindset, being proactive versus reactive. You know, having those foundational pieces in place, understanding what that means, understanding how to assess the data, and then how to use that, assess the data, and then apply, right? So, you know, I would encourage us as we embark on this three-year journey to understand that the rapid turnaround doesn't mean that we're gonna have every kid in every situation fix and everybody achieving. Is that their average? Is not every, as I say, every child is a thirty percent. That would be really scary. But an average of thirty percent, we have very bright children and I'm thinking for recognizing the long, you know, it is long because I do believe in the kids, I believe in the teachers, I believe in this community, despite our obstacles. We are, we are all recoverers, I see it. And so having those beliefs and expectations, I'm not afraid. I'd rather have a high target and, and miss it a little bit than to be down here and no one is knowing that it's understanding. This has to happen now. So I just wanted to encourage us, you know, as we think about three years and what rapid turnaround means, that we don't get caught up in thinking we're saying everything's gonna be fixed. It won't be, by far.
So for overall?
Real growth, this, this could happen.
And then I have another question. When you leave a district, do they fall apart?
That's a really good question. So it depends, to be perfectly honest. So if at the end of three years, we're completely gone out of the district, um, if there's a lot of capacity at the central office, they can generally keep the work moving forward. But generally speaking, it's really the folks that we've been around for about that, that five-year mark that keep on going to work.
So the districts that have, that you have been in five or seven years, they're the ones that when you're gone, they're able to sustain?
Correct, correct.
Have any of them fallen apart?
Um, two have. So out of the roughly seventeen we worked in, two have fallen apart. And that was because, um, new board fired the superintendent. Um, when the superintendent was terminated, the deputy, all of the cabinet basically left. So the new person coming in undid all of the work of the previous administration and just started. And so they undid all of that work and they started over. So those are the kinds of things. Again, we're an investment in your current human capital. So if we build the capacity of one person or twenty people we've been working with and they're now great, and then all of a sudden fifteen of those twenty people are gone. All right, all the knowledge and skills that were imparted into them just left the issue. And so, um...
Falls back on us to keep things going.
Exactly, exactly. Um, the other part about your first question too that I want to name, we only hold ourselves accountable to your goals. So we don't have another set of metrics. The goals that are outlined in your partnership agreement are our goals. So if you don't hit them, we fail. So there's no, oh, Ben Harper didn't get their goals with partners, did a good job. Yeah, we, we, your goals are our goals.
So we get a discount then?
When, when we're successful?
When you're not successful.
Oh, wow, okay. Yeah, I reject that. We don't do that, so. You got any questions? Yes?
Thank you. I also failed to mention, um, we did a survey, uh, parents and students, the data Mr. Hill presented, and we just shared the whole partnership agreement concept. Unfortunately, there were two people who actually took the survey. But of the thirteen, they were overwhelmingly, they recognized in terms of what would best support the students, best support the staffs, the survey and results did have this partnership school. Again, it's very small, very small representation of a larger group, um, but important. The other thing I failed to mention is that I did give some reference chefs as well. Um, I talked to two different, um, entities. One was someone in the partnership school a month ago, and he said by far, this is a superintendent out of Arkansas?
Mississippi.
Mississippi. He said that by far, um, the K-five, especially the K-five work, the partnership schools, as a part of the, you know, and the transformation, the work that was done in Mississippi, in the schools, he just couldn't say enough. He was, he did ask a question, okay, well, how's this gonna work if they do all of their schools? And, you know, he looked at that model. Um, now the good news is, you know, training will be able to pull power out there for three schools that are in love and partnership. Um, and so he did raise that question, make sure we can go to clerical and how they could help him at the, you know, six, twelve. Because what I saw, what he could speak to was K-five. Then I also talked to the superintendent of Battle Creek, and she could say a few of the positive things as well. But she did talk about that Mr. Hill alluded to. And those, they had the schools that had it, and one of the schools that did not work. And went back to that concept of being proactive, for reactive, proactive, shifting mindset, the buy-in from the staff, buy-in from the district, and the leadership in that building. Um, and the buy-in just never came. So the transformation of that was, of course, is another way their schools have a rapid turnaround. And the buy-in, she said, was very high, but it wasn't going to staff, and they won. And so they saw a huge change. So again, back to that investment in human capital and the mindset of our staff, or what we believe our kids can or cannot do. And when we assess that and move into the heart of that, um, that's going to be an indicator for us. And I would be very comfortable standing with the Department of Education and the state superintendent and showing the data to say, you know, our mindset work was huge, therefore we need more time. Our mindset work was minimal, and bam, when we knocked it out. And I'm comfortable, wherever we are is where we are, um, lead to a greater reality, and then the focus will get a real change.
And we measure all of those. So you won't be guessing around what your goals areas are. We have, yeah, we hold ourselves accountable to a very high standard, so.
I just want to say, um, I didn't get a chance to listen to the presentation. I think I was up here that day and I walked past and the guys were talking, but I, I had to leave. And I would say today that, which I had, because you spoke truth to power here today. When we talk about urban schools, because it is a difference. And people try to compare, uh, a middle-class school or upper-middle class. There's no comparison. Uh, yeah, we have drugs in each school, right? We have family issues in each school. But they don't deal with an issue of a child coming to school at seven in the morning without eating breakfast, right? Uh, they don't deal with all of the destructive issues that happen at home. So you talked about you wanted to say the strong words to get a reaction. Well, you gotta reaction for me because I like that, right? I think, um, and I shouldn't say this on the mic, but, uh, you gotta have enough test tick of fortitude in order to do what it takes, because we haven't done what we needed to do. So it's time that we ball up the fist, right, and come out swinging. Um, and you gotta change your culture and climate when you're at a peril, and that's where we are today. So thank you. Uh, looks like you guys have done good work and appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for your time. If there are any other questions that emerge after the fact, please, if Dr. Walker has all my contact information, or if you want any other support, maybe feel free, send me an email contact. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Dr. Walker, Policy A four thirty-one.
Thank you. So Policy A four thirty-one, we go on, requires the board to identify and persons who are designated to hair. Um, the staff who have the policy there, so next week, I'll bring to your request that we name Brian Leonard, who has been to train and secure. What he needs to do to fulfill that role, I would request the board designate him as the hair, uh, person.
Does the board have any questions concerning that or what it is, what it means? Okay, so, uh, subcommittee reports, I think, uh, we do those next week, right? So, I think, well, we can do more. Yeah, well, we can do it next week. So we, we may, so we, we can do the subcommittee reports next week. Uh, superintendent, do you have any final comments?
Uh, yes, I do. I wanted to just update the board. I hate that Miss McCallard left. If I heard her question correctly, she references, as if she thought we were gonna have to hit these goals by the end of the school year. So I just wanted to go over, I'm sure she misunderstood something there, I'll call her. I know, thank you, Susan, for getting your information. Um, and that's why we have a stated change in this year, we have, but not to the level of the partnership. We're seeing significant change this year. Um, and, but in terms of the partnership, we're gonna be every minute of those three years, as we've already talked about. So I'll directly speak with her. I just want to clarify for those who may be listening or who are still here, that if I understood it correctly, we are not being pressed to get this done in the next one to three months. It's really the next one to three years. Uh, the other thing, just so you all know, I have been meeting individually with each of the partners in the neighborhood, to go over their goals and benchmarks, so, you know, to clarify what they are proposing. So we can look at, you know, we're building our master's calendar that we should do in June. Um, we are, um, creating our structures, getting ourselves organized. I got to go to what Mr. Hill said, you know, I have a first, because we can't chart. You know, what are all the things that we're saying we're gonna do, how are we gonna do it, who's gonna be responsible? So that's the work that I am doing now is, um, yeah. Um, in this agreement, to be able to, you know, run before you next steps, next steps, next steps, as we have to chum out how we are going to attain these goals. So I just kinda wanna update you on that. And it was very exciting. I can't wait to talk to our partners this weekend, uh, get a better understanding of what they're expecting to bring, um, and how infused that is about your current and what you will be doing as we continue to move forward as a district. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Um, I have, uh, let's see, no comments tonight. Uh, I would, would just say that, uh, go seeking funds and we'll see what the data shows within an hour. Trustee seats?
Uh, I have no comments, but I would like to thank Mr. Hill for the presentation. I, um, looking at the content, I think it would work in the school district. And hopefully, uh, whatever it takes, uh, the resources that are necessary. We apply those resources because it's much needed, and I would say it's long overdue. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahoney.
Okay, Krista, um, this week we lost, um...
Hey, Krista. Um this week we lost another former teacher, Marion Manthing, who was the um instrumental in the Boynton uh library that was so nice for so many years. In fact, I've had several teachers as I've been working on MLK library brought up her name. And so we lost her this week. And then I have a question. So then our work session is gonna be our committee as a whole? Or are we gonna add on another meeting?
Well, we 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 can, we can talk about that. I mean, um maybe in the next week's meeting, maybe it's a, like, we do our committee meetings. Maybe we meet on Wednesday, Thursday, whatever it is, right, as a committee as a whole.
Yeah, because otherwise it's gonna make the work sessions really long. Okay, that was it.
Alright, Mrs. McGowan?
Mr. Leonard, I would like a parking place closer. I would like a parking place closer instead of always having to park way out there.
So I'm assuming that means the sign is not out there?
There.
No, okay.
What's that have a shallow floor?
Well, actually, that's a good point. So thank you for that. Because we've always had the parking, the seventh spot saved for the board members right here. And so that was intended to. Okay, alright. So we appreciate that.
I've never been able to park close.
So any other business tonight? Being there no other business, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh three. Good night.